Good evening. Welcome to this special meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, January 19th, 2016. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Laura?
Here.
Mrs. McDonald?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Burton?
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. Thank you. This is the first of a series of three meetings that we will be taking care of this evening, so we will be doing rather a lot of in and out. But our meetings are scheduled at this point to begin right now at 6:15. Our next special meeting will begin at 6:45, or as soon as our previous meeting ends. Our regular general meeting will begin at 7 o'clock, again, or as soon as the previous meeting ends. So we'll be doing a bit of in and out, but if you hang with us, we should be with you for a good chunk of the evening. The next item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. We do not see anybody in the audience, nor do I have any blue slips from folks who would like to address the audience. Anyone over here would like to address the audience? No? Alrighty. Next item on our agenda is Item 3, Recess to Close Session to Consider Written Legal Opinion from Counsel. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Laura.
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District recess to close session for consideration of written legal opinion from counsel.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there any questions or comments about recessing to close session at this time? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are now going into closed session. We will return to take care of the rest of the items on this agenda and other agendas of the evening. We're in closed session. Good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening, January 19th, 2016, Livonia Public Schools, continuation of our special meeting. For those of you who joined our room while the board was in closed session, we are in a series of three meetings this evening. We do have a couple of obligatory items to take care of before we get into our regular voting meeting, and our Stevenson art students, and a lot of other exciting things that we'll take care of this evening. So if you'll indulge us just for a few more business items, we'll be right with you for the more fun activities of the evening. The next item on our agenda of our special meeting is Item 4, First Amendment to Offer to Purchase Real Estate. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the resolution for the First Amendment to the Sale of Property to Frederick Nasser on behalf of an entity to be formed for 8100 Hubbard Road, Westland, Michigan, property also known as Nankin Mills, and also move that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent or her designee to execute the First Amendment and any documents necessary and incidental to the sale.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura. Are there any questions or comments on this item before we vote on it? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The conclusion of that item does conclude our special meeting of January 19th. We do have one other special meeting that we need to take care of before we get into the other activities of our evening. We will now be opening the special meeting of January 19th, 2016, that begins at 6:45. It is actually beginning a few minutes after 7:00. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes, here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Laura?
Here.
Mrs. McDonald?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Burton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on the special meeting of 6:45 is Audience Communications. This meeting will be followed by our regular general meeting, at which time we will also have audience communication. I am under the assumption, I have three individuals who have given me blue slips that they would like to speak at audience communication. I'm assuming that the three of you would prefer to speak at the general meeting, which will begin in probably about five to 10 minutes. If that is not correct, you can approach the podium right now and I'll pull your blue slip for you. But if you'd like to speak at the general meeting, you can just stay where you are and I'll call on you in a few minutes. So David, Brian, and Megan. Okay. Seeing none of the three, I'm going to call on you in a few minutes when we have audience communication opportunity at the general meeting. The next item on our agenda this evening is Election of Officers. Our officers for our school board are elected amongst the board. This happens at the beginning of every January. We have had some discussion of officers amongst our board members at our public meeting, at our study session, and last week's committee of the whole. At this point, we will take nominations and vote on the officers, office of president, vice president, secretary, and the appointment of a treasurer. Just as a note to those who may be watching our meeting this evening, nominations can come from any board member. They do not need a second. Once nominations cease to come forward, we will call for a vote on those offices. The first office that we are taking nominations for is for the Office of President. Do we have any board members who would like to make a nomination for the Office of President?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers?
I would like to nominate you, Colleen Burton, as president for the next upcoming year.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for other individuals for the Office of President? Normally, I ask the individual if they're willing to serve, so I will tell you that I am willing to serve as president. It is a lot of work, but it's been my honor to this point, and I'm happy to accept that nomination if this is how the board chooses to have me serve. Any further nominations? Seeing none, the nominations are now closed. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role? And the, I'm sorry, the role of, sorry, will you please take the vote, rather, for Colleen Burton for president?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And as I said, it has been my honor to serve, and I'm very happy to serve the district and our school board in this manner. So thank you. The next office that we will accept nominations for is the Office of Vice President. Do we have board members who would like to nominate an individual for the Office of Vice President? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. I would like to nominate Diane Laura.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice President? Mrs. Laura, are you willing to serve in that office?
I would be honored to serve as another year's vice president.
Thank you. Seeing no further nominations, the nominations are now closed. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the vote for Diane Laura for the Office of Vice President?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Congratulations. We're thrilled to have you serve.
You're easy to work on.
Well, thanks. The next office for the Board of Education is the Office of Secretary. Do I have board members who would like to make a nomination for the Office of Secretary of the Board of Education? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. For the Office of Secretary, I would like to nominate Tammy Bonnefield.
Do we see any, Mrs. Bonnefield, are you willing to serve in that office?
Yes, I would love to. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations for the Office of Secretary? Seeing none, we will close the nominations. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the vote for Tammy Bonnefield for Secretary?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Appointment of Treasurer. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson?
Move that Lisa Abbey be appointed Treasurer of Livonia Public Schools School District for 2016. Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Do we have any questions or comments on this item? For the benefit of the public who are viewing at this time, it is customary for the Board of Education to very happily give the duties of treasurer to our director, our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Ms. Lisa Abbey.
Thank you very much. Be happy to serve.
Thank you. We're glad, because you're not getting out of here if you said no. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there any further comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the vote for Lisa Abbey to serve as the treasurer?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That is the conclusion of our 6:45 special meeting of January 19th, 2016. Thank you for joining us and being patient with us throughout that task. We will now open the regular meeting of January 19th, 2016. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role? Yes. It's a little redundant, sorry about that, guys.
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Laura?
Here.
Mrs. McDonald?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Burton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a full house this evening. Thank you so much for joining us on this very, very cold, uncomfortable evening out there. If you are following along with our meeting here in our room, we have agendas for you just outside the door. If you would choose to use one, you're welcome to. If you would like to participate in audience communications, there are blue slips just outside the door. If you would be so kind as to fill one out, we would like to have a record of your participation in the meeting this evening. If you're following along from home, our agendas can be found on our website, which is at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to agendas and follow right along with us this evening. This evening's meeting is a general meeting, or what we commonly refer to as a voting meeting. The items that you'll see coming before the board this evening have been discussed typically twice before, once at a study session and once at a committee of the whole. Therefore, you may or may not see the depth of questions and answers and discussions. That is not because we are not putting a lot of time and effort into it, but rather it's because this is the third time we're going to be discussing these items, and well, we will have, certainly have an amount of discussion on them. A lot of it has already taken place over the last couple of weeks. If you are looking for more discussion on items, I strongly encourage you to tune in or attend our Committee of the Whole meetings. They are frankly my favorite kind of meeting, because there's a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth. Frequently, the board sends items back to the administration or requests further information. So if you're looking to find out the real nuts and bolts of the issues that are coming before the board, those are the meetings that I really suggest that you tune into. They're quite interesting if you follow board-type stuff. The next item on our agenda this evening, we have a lot of exciting things going on near the beginning of our meeting this evening. The next item is Item 3, Communications, and A is our Student Art Gallery, and this evening we're honoring our Stevenson High School art students. Mrs. Jenkins, would you like to lead us through this?
Thank you. Good evening, President Burton, members of the board, Mrs. Oakquist. I'm starting to feel like quite the art curator here with this program. You'll notice on the table in front of you, we've got, featured this month, we have three pieces of sculpture. One is a wire sculpture to our ceramic. And also, over here on the little ring stands, there are, I think I'm counting, five sterling silver rings that were made by a student in one of our jewelry classes.
You'll have to make sure there are five by the end of the evening.
Yeah, I know. I already have dibs on the greenstone. So with that, we'll get started. Once again, it's my pleasure to formally introduce our Student Art Gallery installation for this month here in the boardroom. As you can see on the board behind you, we've got some fantastic pieces. I do want to point out, we have a bit of a snafu this evening. We have two art teachers at Stevenson, and each of them thought the other had one of our students' pieces. So Sarah Dressing, one of our honorees this evening, her pieces will be picked up tomorrow from Stevenson and added to the display. So we apologize in advance of the presentation to Sarah, who actually, she left soccer and everything to come tonight, so I feel really bad about that. So, okay, as we mentioned, we're featuring five artists from Stevenson High School. Just to recap the program, the students featured are among hundreds of art students at their school who were selected for this honor by their art teachers. At Stevenson, the art department is led by Brooke Brewster, along with art teacher Heidi Posh. The five students being recognized this evening were selected from approximately 175 students in 12 different art classes at Stevenson, so that's quite an honor. Congratulations. Each will be presented with a certificate, which reads Livonia Public Schools Certificate of Recognition Student Art Gallery Featured Artist Selected to Represent the Stevenson High School Art Department at the Board of Education Office, January 19th, 2016. And without further ado, I'd love to introduce our artists to you this evening. First, we have Bianca Bosas, and Bianca is an 11th grader. There you are, Bianca. And which pieces are yours, son?
Um, the jewelry.
Okay, so Bianca is the jewelry artist. Talk to her if you want to borrow a ring. You can go ahead and stay up here, and we'll give everyone an applause at the end. Next, we have Sarah Dressing, a 9th grader at Stevenson. There you are, Sarah. Next, we have Tatiana Smick, and Tatiana is a 10th grader. Next, we have Alexander Stratton. Alexander, come on up, Alexander, squeeze in here. Alex is a senior, and he made the sculpture pieces. The starfish opens. There's a top to it, and there's a special, an additional sculpture inside.
There is. Does it move?
The starfish.
No, it doesn't move.
No.
I will display.
Okay, and finally, we have Sidney Queen. Sidney is also a senior. There you are, Sidney. Join me in congratulating our artists for this month. And thank you for sharing your work with us. We're going to keep your pieces, I think we're returning the sculptures and the jewelry right away, but we'll keep the other pieces on the board, and Sarah, I'll be sure to pick up your art tomorrow from Stevenson, okay?
Mrs. Jenkins?
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, would they point out what their pieces are?
Oh, absolutely. So who has the photographs? Okay, come on up. This is Tatiana, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Tatiana has the two photographs, one on the top left and one in the center. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, we said Bianca has the jewelry. Sarah's are to come tomorrow. Alex has the sculpture, and Sidney. Sidney's pieces, the three are digital illustrations. Okay?
Some of us feel some nice.
So also, I'd like to draw everyone's attention to the artwork that's on display in our lobby. The little people at Roosevelt Elementary, students at Johnson Upper Elementary, and Frost Middle School created the displays out in the lobby. And so check those out on your way out, and also watch for information on this year's Art with the Community that's happening, three nights, one at each high school. I think it's toward the end of February, but watch our website for the details on that, too. So join me again in congratulating our student artists for this month.
President Burton?
Yes, Mrs. McDonald.
I would like to ask, and I don't know, I don't think our board members would object to this, but being that Sarah's piece wasn't here, could we possibly invite her back next month, so if she has time, I don't know what her schedule's like, to highlight her piece so she can enjoy this as much as everybody else does?
Yep.
So if you're available.
That would be fine.
If that's okay with everyone else.
That would be great.
Absolutely fine. Thank you so much. We're going to have a break in a few moments, so that everyone can, probably we'll take about a five or 10-minute break, which is customary after our honorees. And that way, you can congratulate the honorees this evening, and those of you who'd like to take some photographs up at the front with your art and with the group, will have an opportunity to do so in just a few minutes. The next item on our agenda is Item 3B, the Golden Apple Award, Jeanie Duquette at Randolph Elementary.
Okay, thank you, President Burton. When it's lunchtime, excuse my voice this evening, when it's lunchtime and the teachers at Randolph Elementary send their students to the lunchroom and the playground, they know that their kids are in good hands with Mrs. Duquette, affectionately known as Miss Jeanie. Miss Jeanie has been a mainstay for 13 years at Randolph Elementary, where she serves as a noon monitor in the lunchroom and on the playground. At 85 years young, Miss Jeanie doesn't miss a beat. Rain or shine, humid, frigid, or freezing weather, she can be spotted heading into Randolph Elementary, wearing her bright orange vest and always wearing a smile on her face. She is the epitome of a Golden Apple awardee, someone who is consistently there for the betterment of our schools and does so with a caring heart and positive attitude. I had the opportunity to enjoy a nice telephone conversation with Miss Jeanie last week, and you would have thought I was asking about her very own grandchildren. She's very proud of her work at Randolph, so sweet and so sincere. She said, "I've been doing this all my life," noting that she first served on lunch duty as a young mother when her oldest child was a kindergarten, and that was 55 years ago. Before I tell you more about this special lady, I'd like to ask her to join me at the podium, along with Trustee Eileen McDonald, who will present Mrs. Duquette with her Golden Apple Award. Join me, ladies?
Hello, welcome.
Jeanie, I'd like to present this to you. Isn't this wonderful?
Yes, it is.
Congratulations, and we thank you so much for all the hard work that you do for our children. And it's just amazing that someone like you that will take the time to continue to grow as an individual, and, you know, the things that people said about you are wonderful. So I'd like to read a few of those. Some of the comments from the staff indicated that Jeanie was punctual, dependable, caring, and dedicated, and a role model for all ages, which is very obvious, because you're a role model for everyone in this room. And secondly, she treats the students as if they were her own grandchildren, and she models positive behaviors and holds students accountable for these behaviors and enhances the Randolph environment at the school. And those behaviors include please and thank you, and taking turns, and being safe, and taking care of each other. And some of the students say, "You're wonderful. Thanks for synergizing with us. Thank you for always being there, and thank you for everything that you do for our children in our school district.
I just want to thank everybody, and especially everybody at Randolph. You don't know how much this means to me. Thank you very much.
And for those of you who may not have noticed, there's a lovely poster right behind Jeanie's family that says, "Congratulations, Miss Jeanie, you are the apple of our eye." And it looks to be signed by a whole lot of students from Randolph.
Yes. Thank you very much. If I may indulge in a few more comments, if you've joined me up here, you're not getting away yet. The Golden Apple Award is given to those who go above and beyond in our schools, serving as a role model and a constant source of pride. As a noon monitor at Randolph, Mrs. Duquette manages the cafeteria and supervises the playground, as we mentioned, making sure that the students are well-behaved and making smart choices. I'm sure that you keep them in line, don't you? But according to the staff members and students, she does so much more. Several 4th graders last school year wrote letters to Miss Jeanie, telling her how much they love her and how much they would miss her. Some even pleaded with her to go with them over to Johnson. So, let's see here. I think that will do it. And we already gave you your pin, right? We have a beautiful little Golden Apple pin, and we will be on the lookout for you, wearing your orange vest, coming to and fro at Randolph Elementary. Congratulations to you again. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, and thank you so much for your service to the school district and to the kids of Randolph Elementary School. The next item on our agenda is Item 3C, Recognition of Board Members for School Board Recognition Month.
Okay, thank you, President Burton. Each month, they come before you to do presentations of congratulations and thanks and recognition for impressive service and contributions to our school district. While tonight is no different, as you saw from the first two items on our agenda, except for this agenda, the focus is aimed at all of you, the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education. January is School Board Recognition Month in the state of Michigan, so we're joining the 545 local and 56 intermediate school districts across the state to say thank you. As members of the Board of Education, you are among the more than 4,000 community volunteers statewide, who serve on local school boards and who give freely of your time and talents to benefit our students and staff. Our district is very fortunate to have a group of board members who take the public trust and responsibility of this role very seriously. Members of this board dedicate an enormous number of hours preparing for and participating in board meetings, where they're faced with decisions that are often challenging and some that are often quite difficult. This school year, we saw the board carry out one of its core responsibilities of hiring a superintendent, doing so with a high level of integrity and professionalism. It is said, "The role of a school board member is one of the toughest volunteer jobs in America." In an era of unprecedented choice in education and funding constraints that never seem to end, school boards are tasked with charting a course that provides long-term, sustainable success for current and future students. Board members here in Livonia Public Schools are charged with the oversight of roughly $150 million budget, approximately 2,000 employees, and more than 14,000 students in 27 schools. It's a large job. But it's not all hard work. On the fun side, our board members can often be found visiting school events throughout our school district and sharing their Livonia pride with everyone they know. In fact, one particular board member flexes her social media muscle nearly every day in order to let the wider community know that we have great things happening in our schools. Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis, with your hashtag Livonia Pride. It's that Livonia pride that makes our school districts shine, and we're thankful to the Board of Education, is thankful that the Board of Education is a large source of that pride. Our Board of Education is also special because its members have either completed or are working toward their certification through the Michigan Association of School Boards. This is a large task and a true accomplishment once achieved. I would now like to read a resolution from the Wayne County Regional Educational Services I would now like to read a resolution from the Wayne County Regional Educational Services Agency's Board of Education. And this resolution was adopted by the Wayne Risa Board of Education on December sixteenth, two thousand fifteen. Whereas, the Boards of Education of the thirty-three constituent school districts of Wayne County promote quality education for all children attending their local schools, and whereas these committed public servants demonstrate dedication to their civic duty and voluntarily contribute countless hours of service on behalf of the students of Wayne County and their communities, and whereas Wayne County school boards are strong advocates for the needs of their students in their communities and with the policymakers in Lansing and Washington, and whereas Wayne County school boards regularly do all they can to ensure academic success for all Wayne County schools, and whereas Wayne County school boards understand the importance of a quality education for their youth and recognize that this is the most important factor in the success of our local communities, state, and country. And whereas local control continues to play a vital role in the success of public education, and whereas the state of Michigan and the State Board of Education have declared January two thousand sixteen as School Board Recognition Month. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Regional Educational Services Agency Board of Education, in the spirit of the School Board Recognition Month theme, "School Boards Lead Strong," recognizes, celebrates, and commends the dedication, contributions, and leadership of the Wayne County School Boards of Education, presented and adopted December sixteenth, two thousand fifteen.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'd now like to present each of you with a special certificate from the Michigan Association of School Boards, which reads, "School Board Recognition Month, January two thousand sixteen, in appreciation of your dedication to our children and public education in Michigan."
If I may? You absolutely may. Thank you. Thank you. That's okay. Thank you. Now I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Oquist, who has a few words to say as well.
Thank you. I know that our board is not desirous of the ones to receive accolades, as you are normally focused on giving those out to others. But we appreciate the opportunity this evening because you are so deserving of this recognition. As Mrs. Jenkins mentioned, this is not only one of the most challenging, but one of the most important roles as public servants that exists in our society. And I always had a great appreciation for what our Board of Education did and the care and commitment with which you do your role. But I've had an opportunity to see firsthand over these past number of months the tremendous amount of time and dedication and care and commitment you put into this role that many never see. All of those behind the scenes things. I doubt many people know about the very hefty packet that most of you, that all of you receive every Thursday from me, including information from legal contracts to academic updates and a wide variety of other things that you pour through over the weekend, ask questions about, and are prepared each Monday to discuss, ask questions, and explore. And as you know, this board in particular has been recognized for its professionalism and its powerful practices by our outside accrediting agency, Advanced Ed, who specifically noted the work of our Board of Education. You truly are, you represent your community with great distinction, and we thank you for the many, many hours of service and care and commitment you give. So, hashtag Livonia Pride. Thank you all.
Other comments from board members?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you very much. It is our honor to serve. It really is. We say that, but we truly mean it. My husband has said, "All you need to do to get Colleen or any one of her board member friends to start talking about Livonia Public Schools is to say, 'Hi.'" It is very much an honor. We take our work very, very seriously. We are thrilled that you allow us to serve the district in this way. If those of you who are watching desire to serve in this way in the future, come and talk to us about it. Generally, folks think about it for a long, long time before they decide they would like to do something along this line for their community. Any of the seven of us would be happy to share with you the really, really fun and some of the agonizing parts of it. But we thank you very much, and we thank you for allowing us to serve. The next item on our agenda is actually going to be an item that we are moving. Mr. Centers, I'm going to give you a moment to move Mrs. Scott's information up. We have one other item under Personnel that really fits better into our communications and more of our celebratory activities of the evening. And that, if you're following along, it is under Personnel Matters, Item 7A, Appointment of Director of Elementary and District Services. So if you'll give us just a moment to move our paperwork so that we can all make sure that we're following along properly. And Mrs. Scott, if you can be ready, we're going, where did she go? You're around her somewhere. You can't leave yet.
There she is.
Yes. Right after this. And right after this item, we will be taking a break so folks can congratulate our honorees of the evening. Mr. Centers, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on our agenda this evening will be Number 7A, Appointment of Director of Elementary and District Services. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
I would that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and employee Cynthia Scott for the position of Director of Elementary and District Services, beginning January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Oquist, would you like to speak at this item?
I would love to. I'd like to invite Mrs. Scott up to the podium. As you know, our cabinet members serve essential roles in our district. We have seven cabinet members, and each of them wear many hats. The primary role for the Director of Elementary Programs and District Services is to really be the district's advocate for the students, the staff, the parents, and the community at our case six level. There are a few other things underneath the umbrella, but we'll tell Cindy about those in detail. I've had the privilege of working with Mrs. Scott and knowing her for over seventeen years, and she is a remarkable individual. She is truly, has an impressive heart and an impressive mind, which is a great combination. She is an advocate for staff, she's an advocate for students, and she has just an unparalleled work ethic. She is going to be a remarkable voice for the students at the elementary level and throughout our district, and I know that our program could not be in better hands. So we are thrilled to bring this appointment to you with the highest recommendation.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the Board of Education? Seeing none, for the benefit of the public who may not have been aware, Mrs. Scott has been able to take over this role while Mrs. Oquist was in her interim superintendent position. So, we're blessed, and I believe you are also, to have given this a try for a few months before you stand before us tonight, but we're thrilled. We're going to go ahead and take our vote on this, and then I'm going to ask you to share a few words if you'd like. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonfield, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says, "Yes, President Burton?"
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. President Burton, board members, and Superintendent Oquist, I'm really humbled to accept this position. I want to thank you for your trust and your belief in me. I wish to extend my deepest respect and appreciation to all the leaders and the staff that have worked with over the years. I'm deeply indebted to all of you. During these last few months, cabinet members and many others have provided me with guidance and support in the interim position, and I want to thank you for always being willing to answer that one more question. I continue to have questions, and they continue to be there for me. I also want to recognize especially the LPS staff that I've worked with over the years and thank them for their teamwork and for standing beside me all these years. They were always willing to go that extra mile and to learn something new. My relationship with each of you are very special, and I want to thank you personally. My family has also provided me support over the years and encouragement during my professional career, including my husband Gary, who's sitting over there by Charlotte, who used to be in this position too. And he's here tonight, and I want to thank you for putting up with my long hours. Again, I feel honored being here tonight, and I will work tirelessly to live up to your expectations. Thank you.
We do have a lot of honorees to congratulate this evening. This time, we are going to take about a ten-minute break or so in our meeting, so you can have the opportunity to congratulate folks yourself. Most of our parents taught us that it's rude to get up and leave a meeting. I'll tell you that following our break, you're certainly welcome to stay and follow the rest of our meeting along. We will be thrilled to have you, but it's also not rude to leave. You guys can feel free to do so if you so choose. We are now at recess for about the next ten minutes. Good evening. Welcome back to the continuation of the regular meeting of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. If you're following along on your agenda right now, we are at Item 3D, Written Communications. Do any board members have written communications they would like to share with the board? I do not have a written communication, however, I do have a verbal communication that a community member asked me to pass on to the board. I had a volunteer from Coolidge Elementary School stop me on Sunday and said, "Please tell everybody how wonderful it is at Coolidge Elementary School. I absolutely love it. Please pass it on to your fellow board members. Thank everybody for what they do." She goes, "I'm sure it's the same at all the other elementary schools, but I absolutely love it. The staff is wonderful, the students are wonderful, it's a fabulous place to volunteer." And she said, "Please pass this on to others." So, it is my joy to do that kind of nice thing. Any other comments folks would like to share? All righty, seeing none, the next item on our agenda is Item 3E, Audience Communications. Audience Communications is a time that the Board of Education sets aside to listen to members of our community. We do ask that everyone honor the three-minute time limit, rather, and that is so that everybody has a fair opportunity to be heard. Just so folks are aware, it is a time that we set aside to listen to the community, but it is not a question-and-answer session. So even though we may not be questioning, you know, back and forth with you, please know that we are listening and paying attention to what is being said. It was suggested in the recent past that we let folks know a little bit more about the role of the Board of Education and why responses come from different folks when we hear from the audience on audience communication. There are three primary roles of the Board of Education. The first role is to hire and evaluate our superintendent. This board is thrilled to have hired Mrs. Oquist most recently. The second role is to set policies for the district. And the third is strategic planning or long-term goals for the district. All of the day-to-day operations of the district are down to the superintendent and all of the staff of the school district. To that end, frequently, if someone is approaching the Board of Education, their response sometimes will come from the board, but more often may come from administration. And that is because if their issue deals with a day-to-day operations item, you can expect a response back from our superintendent on behalf of the board. The superintendent, then, on the other hand, is evaluated by the Board of Education in the carrying out of his or her duties. For audience communication, as I said earlier, we do have three individuals who have expressed a desire to speak. Our first is David Rosser, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly. Did I get it?
Close. Close.
How should I pronounce it?
Roser.
Roser, okay. Sorry about that.
Good evening, President Burton, Superintendent Oquist, and members of the board. My name is David Roser, and I'm here to speak to you about LPS investing in teachers. I'm currently in my fourth year as a teacher at Franklin High School. When I hired in as a teacher in Livonia, I was ecstatic to not only be teaching in my home district that I graduated from, but to have finally landed a teaching position after spending several years after college searching. I understood that when I hired in, starting salaries were lower than other career fields, but as experience was gained in teaching, I would be rewarded with incremental salary increases via step system. Stepping down from a retail management position, I calculated that although I would incur a pay cut to become a teacher, within a few years, that difference would be made up by the step increases. With only a half-step increase in the past three years, leaving me at a step zero point five, this career change has cost me money. The major home improvement retailer that I was a manager for paid a yearly hourly increase to nearly all of its employees. Even employees in underperforming store locations received some, albeit small, annual increase in their wage. Livonia Public Schools states it has the best staff. I wish that LPS would show us that they value us by rewarding our investment in our education and our efforts with students with a salary increase, as my aforementioned employer did. I would like to say that they are my previous employer, but as I still work for them, that is not true. Since leaving my management role with them, I have had to maintain, remain a part-time employee with them, as well as pick up a third job at a local machine shop on an as-needed basis. I would love to make the investment to further myself as an educator and enroll in a master's program, but between three jobs to make ends meet, it is not possible on a financial or time basis. I truly love working with students every day. It is the most satisfying part of my job, and I love doing it. I just wish LPS would recognize mine and all teachers' combined increasing efforts with students and reward us for doing it by giving us a yearly salary step. Thank you for your time and understanding. I sincerely hope that the board and LPS will reward teachers and allow me to continue to teach and not look for another career out of financial necessity.
Thank you. The next blue slip that I have is from Brian Shinivar.
Superintendent Oquist, President Burton, and other board members, my name is Brian Shinivar, and I'd like to describe to the audience some effects of current political policies in the state of Michigan on our school district. Governor Snyder is constantly saying that we need to create more and better jobs in the state of Michigan, but what has happened in the teaching profession is the exact opposite. We have fewer jobs, and those that we do have are much less desirable than they once were. Since the beginning of the Great Recession eight years ago, teachers have seen practically no raise in salary. In fact, we've had to suffer a multitude of pay cuts brought about by Lansing's political decisions and a complete lack of effort to fix the school funding problems created by a school district with diminishing enrollment, an enrollment problem often caused directly by the political decisions made in Lansing. The governor talks about creating more and better jobs by making smart political decisions, but let me describe for the audience the crisis that some recent political decisions are creating for public schools. Enrollment and teacher training programs is down by as much as fifty percent compared with ten years ago. Finding high-quality teachers has never been easy, but it may soon be nearly impossible. Based with rising tuition, the best college students feel like the investment in a teaching degree is not worth the insecurity and low pay that is common in the profession now. As state funding shrinks, schools are forced to make cuts. Cuts in salaries and benefits and weakened bargaining rights have sent the message that new teachers may never reasonably expect to see an increase in salary. New teachers are having a hard time staying in their jobs because of low pay, and even experienced teachers are leaving the profession out of frustration. The current political climate prioritizing private sector profits for a few business owners over public sector benefits that work for all of us is bad for our students, bad for our teachers, and especially bad for our community. The governor and our legislature are building a future where a few have everything, and the rest of us are left to fight over scraps in order to have enough money to pay for things like houses in decent neighborhoods, college tuition for our own kids, and in some cases, medical care for our parents or children. Individually and collectively, teachers have protested in Lansing, written letters to legislators and to the newspapers. Our teachers' union has even requested an audience with Representative Laura Cox to discuss educational issues, and we were denied the chance to meet with her. Nobody is listening to us. You are the democratically elected school boards of the Livonia Public Schools. You need to be the message for us. Your message needs to be that students and teachers are a priority in Livonia. And that we are tired of excuses. I want you to make retention of high-quality teachers and fair salary advancement a priority in Livonia. I'm asking you to please use your considerable power as a well-run and trusted school board to be our voice with current lawmakers at the local and state level. They might listen to you as they ignore us. We need to fund schools in a way that acknowledges the benefits of teacher experience and allows teachers to fairly advance their wages. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Megan Brissette. I think I mispronounced your last name also, Megan, I apologize.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Oquist. My name is Megan Brisley, and I teach sixth grade at Riley Upper Elementary School. When I was fifteen, I began working as a lifeguard at Fairway Farm Swim Club here in Livonia. My love of swimming and working with kids made this the perfect summer job for me. I told my mom at the end of that summer that I hoped to one day find a job that I would love as much as I love working at Fairway. My dream came true in two thousand eleven, when I was hired by Livonia Public Schools. I was absolutely thrilled to start my career in a school district that values its teachers and honors the community that they serve. I'm a product of Livonia Public Schools, which has made it that much more special to me. I'm passionate about my job and my students. I'm passionate about my job, and my students get my very best every day in our classroom. There's nothing better than seeing the look on a child's face when something clicks and they just get it. Since being hired, I've invested both time and money in graduate school, participated in various professional development opportunities, and worked hard to improve my skills as a teacher. I love my job, and I'm honored to be working here. I was hired in at step zero of the salary schedule and assumed that my salary would increase a step for every year of experience that I gathered. This is my fifth year working for the school district, and I'm at step one. If the current rate of step advancement continues, I will never reach a salary that was implied by the contract salary schedule. The present financial situation is not good for the school district or for teachers. I'm here today because I'm worried about the future. I'm worried that I won't be able to pay off my student loans. I'm worried that I won't be able to one day buy a house here in Livonia and raise my future family here. I love my job, and I know that I'm a quality teacher. I'm just scared that I won't be able to afford to stay one.
Are there any other members of the audience who'd like to speak to the board? Alright. There is a time at the end of our meeting set aside, there is an Audience Communication Time, there is a Board Communication Time also at the end of our meeting. I'm not telling anyone they have to hang around, because you can certainly watch it on TV or not at all, if you'd like, but that is the appropriate time that the board, if board members would like to have their opportunity to express any thoughts, they can do so. I want you to know that you're not being unheard. We're just trying to follow protocol for everybody. The next item on our agenda is 3F, Response to Prior Audience Communications. Mrs. Oquist, I believe you have a response to a prior Audience Communication for the board.
I did. We had had a parent that had come forward with some concerns regarding logistics and facets of some of our center-based program, and so I just wanted to share a little bit about that with back, that was the requested method. So as you know, we are extraordinarily proud of our special education services provided through LPS and are the host for many county programs. We also have many local center programs. We are known as a destination district for many of these special education offerings. However, we are also open and seek to be responsive to concerns that parents share in this regard about these or any of our other programs. Toward that end, Dr. Terrio had shared a communication that I included in your packet just prior to the holidays following that board meeting, which highlighted, again, some responses to the logistics of where the center-based classrooms, the local center classrooms are located at Churchill, the integration of students throughout the day, including academic classes, electives classes, and passing time. She also highlighted where the special education and general transportation, general education transportation locations are located. In five of the seven areas where we have centers, those are located in the same spot for both special education and general education students. And in two of our schools, due to the volume of the transportation, the volume of students, and the location of the classrooms, they're located in separate areas. One of the other questions that was brought forward was regarding the Western Wayne Skill Center and modifications, programs located there and modifications that would be made. And so as you know, there are some monies included in our bond work for the Western Wayne Skill Center, but not at the level at which, I think that's been made clear throughout the process, not the same level at which our K-12 program is located, where our K-12 programs are located. We do house not only the Ford ASD program for students 18 to 26 with autism, but also our adult ESL program is newly located on the second floor of the Western Wayne Skill Center. Those special education programs have received technology upgrades, and new teacher workstations are coming to those. I believe you approved that at our last regular meeting. And many of our students also experience a half-day, community-based classes that allow for integration within the general public and same-age peers. And so, again, Dr. Terrio works very, very closely, not only with the staff and the students in those programs, but also with the parents, and also facilitates our parent advisory council for continued review of these and other types of issues.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 4, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Laura.
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of December 14th, 2015. 5B, minutes of the special meeting of January 4th, 2016. 5C, minutes of the closed session of January 4th, 2016. 6A, bills for payment, January 20th, 2016.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. Are there questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Do you want our minutes?
Yes. Everyone could pass down their closed session minutes, please. Thank you.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7, Business Matters. Item 7A is, oh, sorry, 7A is taken care of. 7A is, I'm sorry, I'm misspeaking here. Item 6, Business Matters. 6A has been taken care of in our consent agenda. Item 6B is the approval of bid results for Elementary Community Room Technology 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education accept the low bid from Digital Age Technologies, Inc. to purchase and install a commercial-grade digital projector, electronic display screen, and control equipment housed in a lockable cabinet for each elementary school's multipurpose community room in the amount of $185,566 and an additional $18,567 to be set aside as project contingency. The total cost for this purchase is $204,133.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Alice, would you please speak to the side of course, please?
I would be very happy to do that. Thank you very much, President Burton, and good evening, everyone. I'm very pleased this evening to have an opportunity to summarize for the board the presentation and conversation that took place last Monday evening at the Committee of the Whole Meeting relative to this motion that you have in front of you this evening. You may recall that Matt Linder, the representative from Barton-Mallow, provided an overview to the Board of Education on the bid process that led to the recommendation to award the purchase and installation of this equipment to Digital Technologies, Inc. That technology includes a commercial-grade projector, an electronic display screen, as well as the control equipment. And this will be installed, if approved, in each of our K-4 schools, as well as Webster, in their multipurpose room that will also serve as their community room. Currently, our multipurpose rooms in our elementary schools are just that. They are multipurpose rooms. They serve as rooms where professional development for staff occur, where student assemblies and all-school presentations occur, there where parent presentations take place, community events occur there, as well as our physical education classes take place in our multipurpose rooms. And our student lunch programs at the K-4 schools are also in the multipurpose room. So the multipurpose room will also be our community rooms once we have installed this equipment. So it will allow us to enhance the many experiences that take place within this room. And so we do recommend that the board approve this motion.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board members? Mr. Centers?
I just want to thank the community once again. In 2013, we went out for the bond fund, and part of that was installing some new technology. This and the next five items, the next five will be construction bond, but these are dollars that are allocated for us to both expand technology and to improve our buildings, not for general revenue purposes. And we are very excited to use that opportunity to improve our fiscal condition. So, everything we've seen so far, technology-wise, is pretty impressive, engaging, and I think it's a great benefit to students. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board members? Seeing none, we have a motion from Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6C, Approval of Change Order for Environmental Consultant Elementary School Projects. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education approve the change order for Nova Environmental Incorporated for the 2013 bond for a total amount of $125,000.
Support.
We have a motion for Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. And Ms. Abbey, would you like to address this item for us, please?
Yes, thank you very much. Just following up a little bit with what Mr. Centers said, we do have five construction items relative to the 2013 bond that we're going to be talking about and asking the board to approve. So I just wanted to mention that we did have an opportunity at our last committee meeting to spend a great deal of time going over all of these construction items in a great deal of detail. Paul Terrio and Scott Smith from Plant Moran-Cressa were there that evening, as well as Steve Bencaro from McCarthy Smith. Steve and Paul are back here again this evening to support and answer any questions that you have that we don't cover as we discuss each of these items as we go forward. But again, we did have an opportunity. You had your large three-ring binder with a lot of detail in it, and we did ask you to go through that in detail, so we will do that in summary this evening, but hopefully we'll be able to answer all of your questions if you have any still when we go through this. So this particular motion for Nova Environmental, Nova is the environmental consultant that has worked on our K-4 schools for the first two phases. We are very pleased with their work and recommend that they continue with our Phase 3 schools. This does require the approval by the Board of Education for a change order to their contract. This is a $125,000 change order, and it is a change in their contract, so it does require the board approval. We are pleased with their work and would recommend that we go forward with Nova for our K-4 schools for Phase 3. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Centers?
Ms. Abbey, maybe you could just, they are doing a portion of our abatement this year, but not the whole abatement. Can you describe the rationale for that?
You mean in terms of these three schools?
For the whole project.
For all projects, yeah. So as we talk about environmental issues or abatement issues, anywhere that we're touching, changing, upgrading within the school that is, you know, hot in the, is the term, but that has any environmental issues, whether it's asbestos or anything else, that is taken care of as we do that work. If we're not, there may be an occasional closet, or there may be some other part of a building, including maybe some of the pipe-wrapping in some of the tunnels. If we're not touching that, we may not be abating those. Of course, as required by law, we follow all the necessary guidelines to keep those areas confined, as well as, you know, we keep track of all of those as required by the state of Michigan.
And we are using a couple of different companies to do abatement this year, and that is because of our schedule, our need to stay on pace, correct?
Correct. So I'll back up a little bit. So Nova Environmental is actually the professional consulting company that oversees the contractors that will be doing the actual work. So you'll see in our subsequent motions this evening, you'll actually see the recommended contractors that we're hiring, and you're absolutely correct that we do spread that work out between more than one contractor, because, as we talked about, it is a phasing timing issue. So, yes, the environmental contractors get into the building first, they're the first thing that has to happen, and then the demolition and construction follows behind them. So if they fall behind schedule, everyone falls behind schedule, and that would make Mr. Bencaro at McCarthy Smith very anxious. Because we tell him he has to finish and be done so we can get school started on time. So it really is a very defined phasing, and that's one of the things that the professional company, the consultants like Nova, and that we will ask you to approve tonight as well, that's part of their job. They have to put together, working with McCarthy Smith and the contractors, they have to put all of that phasing together to make sure that it all gets done timely. It's a very important part of the overall renovation in the schools.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? And just a clarification for the public, the reason that this is a change order, as Ms. Abbey alluded to, we approved Nova for the first year of bond work, and very intentionally with some of these companies, we have approved just one year to make sure we're happy with their work. If we are happy, and in this case we are, then we change and we add one more year and a few more buildings to them as we go along. That is the case with Nova, as we discussed, as you said, in great detail over the last couple of weeks. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Ms. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6D, Approval of Environmental Consultant, Phase 3 Upper Elementary and Middle School Projects. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from our owner's representative, Plant Moran-Cressa, to award the contract for the Phase 3 Upper Elementary and Middle School Environmental Consultant to Arch Environmental Group at a total cost of $55,000, and authorize Assistant Superintendent Lisa Abbey to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education with the recommended contractors.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. And Ms. Abbey, would you like to address this also?
Yes, thank you very much. Again, this is an environmental consultant for the upper elementary and middle schools, and for that summer, of course, for the next summer, of course, that will be Holmes and Johnson. And we did have a different environmental consultant for the first two years on the project. While they certainly did all the work that we asked them to do, it was not necessarily met all of our needs the first two years. And as you mentioned, Mrs. Burton, we look at each of these on a year-to-year basis, and we are recommending that we move to a different company this year, Arch Environmental. We haven't used them specifically here in the district, but our owner's representative and our construction managers have used them in the past, and they've been very pleased with the work that they've done. So we would recommend that we move and appoint Arch Environmental as the environmental consultants for these two schools for the summer.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6E, Approval of Bid Results for Abatement Contractor, Phase 3 Elementary School Projects. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from our owner's representative, Plant Moran-Cressa, to approve the abatement project budgets for Grant, $5,090; Hoover, $327,000; and Randolph Elementary School, $90,309; and contingency funds of $85,498 for a total amount of $507,897, and authorize Assistant Superintendent Lisa Abbey to negotiate and execute final contract on behalf of the Board of Education with recommended contractors.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Ms. Abbey, would you like to address this item?
Yes, thank you very much. So this recommendation is for our Phase 3 elementary schools, and the bid specifications and the project details are put together by Nova Environmental, the contractor that you approved earlier this evening, and they help us put together the specifications. They're the ones that go through the buildings with the contractors and make sure that we're covering all the covering all the issues that we need to cover, and then they review the actual bids and the work to be done and make the recommendation, which you have in your packet this evening. As we talked about earlier, because of the scope of work that needs to be done this summer, we are recommending two different contractors for these three schools. For Grant and Randolph, which you saw, the grant project is very small this summer. The Grant and Randolph, we are recommending environmental maintenance engineers, or you might hear them referred to as EME, and for Hoover, we're recommending qualified abatement. And we are comfortable with both of those firms and would recommend that we move forward with those, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 6F, Approval of Bid Results for Abatement Contractor, Phase Three Upper Elementary and Middle School Projects. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from our owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the abatement projects for Johnson Upper Elementary School, $117,487, Holmes Middle School, $93,501, and contingency funds of $42,197,000, yeah, 400, I'm sorry, $42,197 for a total amount of $253,185, and authorize Assistant Superintendent Lisa Abbey to negotiate and execute final contracts on, on the behalf of the Board of Education with the recommended contractors.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Centers. It's getting late. Ms. Abbey, would you please address this for us?
Yes, thank you very much. Our last environmental issue for the evening, we are recommending that, again, this was based on Arch Environmental Consultants going out and working in these two schools in finding all of the work that needs to be done, putting the specifications together, reviewing those bids and making a recommendation. Again, they are recommending two different companies for these two schools. At Johnson, it would be the EME again, and with Holmes, qualified abatement. Again, we're, we're very comfortable with both of these recommendations and would recommend that we move forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6G, Approval of Bid Results for Construction, Phase Three Elementary School Projects. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
This is the big money.
Yes, it is.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from our owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the construction project for Phase Three elementary schools as follows. Randolph, $2,927. Plus, thousand, let me say that again, $2,927,000. Left off a thousand of them there, right? Plus contingency of $658,000.
Thousand.
Oh, yeah, $658,600 for a total of $9,534,027, and authorize Assistant Superintendent Lisa Abbey to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education with the recommended contractors.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson, and Ms. Abbey.
Thank you very much. Yes, and would just remind the Board of Education that this is one of three recommendations that we'll be bringing forward. We, this is a result of the bids for the three elementary schools. We will also have the two middle schools, or upper elementary and middle school, and then the high school coming to the Board later this year. We are very pleased to bring this forward, very excited to get going on these projects. We did have an opportunity, again, at our last committee meetings, to spend a great deal of time going over these. We have brought the lowest responsible bid to you on each of these projects. As we talked about, there are a couple of bids that we didn't open because we had very few responses, and those actually have gone out for, for rebids, so we'll be bringing those to at a later date, a couple of the trades relative to these three schools. We did have an opportunity to look at the overall budgets and compare them to where the bids came in. As we have talked about over the last several months, actually almost six months, the construction environment in the state of Michigan is a very good thing, that the construction environment has gotten very big and large and active. The bad news is what that has put is some pressure on our estimated budgets in terms of the fact that the construction costs are escalating. So, as we had an opportunity to talk about in our committee meeting, we do have approximately 1.4 to 1.8 million over budget. You'll see 1.4 in your documents, but we still have those couple of other projects to bring to you going forward. As we talked about, we do have sufficient contingency funds within the 2013 bond proceeds. We're very comfortable moving forward with this recommendation this evening to utilize those funds to move forward with this recommendation. We are carrying about an 8% contingency as well with these specific projects, and we are very comfortable moving forward that we're making the recommendation of the best contractors to get the work done timely and accurately. I'd be happy to any, answer any questions. This does follow the first two phases where our architect friend put these together, and McCarthy Smith will be our construction manager on the project. And again, this is their third summer or three, third year of working on our elementary schools, so we would recommend approving this this evening.
Thank you. Just as a matter of clarification, a member of my family's company is a supplier to one of the 38 contractors listed on this document, so therefore I will be abstaining from discussion or voting on the Grant, Hoover, and Randolph construction item. Because this company is a subcontractor and does not bid directly to LPS, I've been advised that I do not have to abstain, but I am doing so in order to be completely transparent. To understand the perspective, the company was asked to quote approximately $3,000 of cleaner and related products on the school's $9 million worth of work on the project. Are there any questions or comments from other Board members? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. Ms. Abbey, I just want to make sure that everybody is clear. Although we are over budget on this particular phase of the overall project, we are still under budget as a total. Is that right?
Correct. And thank you for reminding me to bring that up. We did talk about at our committee meeting that we have returned several million dollars to the contingency based on our first phase of schools, actually our first and second phase. We went over the 2015 final results at our last committee meeting and talked about those budget variances, and that was a positive variance, meaning we returned money to the contingency fund. So, as we said, we had over about four and a half million dollars in the contingency fund, and yes, we are overall under budget in our projects.
Are there any questions or comments from other Board members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes. No, I'm sorry, abstain. I'm in the habit, I'm sorry. Abstain.
I do have it marked on the paper as abstaining, so, but motion, irregardless motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is Item 7, Personnel Matters. We have already taken care of Item A. Item B is Teacher for Approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the 2015-16 school year to the teacher listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald, and Mr. Winry. Would you like to address this item for us, please?
Yes, this teacher has been interviewed along with other applicants for the vacancy that's existed in our educational program. We believe this teacher to be the most qualified for the position vacant and recommend that she be approved for employment.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the Board? Mr. Winry, I believe this is within the scope of the existing 2015-16 budget, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Keep calling me Mrs.
Sorry.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7C, Retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move, am I in the right one? Sorry. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Avellina Bryant, Leslie Searny, Susan Happ, Catherine Lyman, Kathleen Paparelli, Paul Siri, and Kenneth Sheckel. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mr. Winry, would you like to address this for us, please?
Yes, I'd like to extend our gratitude and thanks to all of these retirees for their hard work and for their loyal service. I'd like to thank them on behalf of administration. Seven employees totaling over 135 years of service, a lot of time. Though I don't always single them out, I'd like to mention Catherine Lyman, she works in my department, she has almost 30 years, and especially Paul Siri, who has 41 and a half years' service. That doesn't happen very often and is truly remarkable, and he's certainly been highly regarded. So, with that, I'd like to recommend adoption of the resolutions of appreciation for services rendered by these hardworking and loyal employees.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions or comments from the Board members?
Congratulations to each and every one of them.
Yes, congratulations is right, definitely. Any other comments?
Congratulations.
Yes, and thanks again so much to, to the work that these employees and all of our employees do. It is sincerely appreciated by the Board of Education and by the community. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield has stepped out of the room for just a moment and suffering from a cold, so I'm, she'll, she will be back momentarily, I'm sure. Mr. Centers, will you please take the role for us, please?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
And President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 8, Reports from the Superintendent. Mrs. Oakwest?
Thank you so much, President Burton. I look forward to sharing with you some information about a number of our talented students. As we know, we have students who have great academic success, artistic talent, ingenuity in problem-solving, and athletic prowess, so I highlight a few of those for you this evening. Last week, we had the opportunity to celebrate many of our young artists, as young as kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. At Stevenson High School, the PTSA hosted the Reflection Celebration. It was emceed by our very own Mrs. Jarvis, who does quite a fine job at, at that emcee role. It was, it was a great evening, and many of our students made it on through to the state level, but it was outstanding to see such participation from so many of our students across the district, and the talent really was remarkable. Speaking of that, I know a number of us had an opportunity to attend the Young Inventors Showcase last week, and I'd really like to highlight this event, which was coordinated by members of our business community, including Livonia Chamber of Commerce, the AM Rotary Club of Livonia, School Craft College Livonia Kids and Families, Dave &amp; Buster's, NYX Incorporated, IME, and of course, our regular sponsor for many, many activities, Alpha USA, and of course, Livonia Public Schools. These business members brought together the opportunity at our middle schools for our students to participate as young inventors and to share their ideas and their ingenuity and creative passions with the group. We had over 500 students submit inventions. That's pretty remarkable. At this particular evening, a beautiful dinner was hosted at Vista Tech by this, by these businesses for over 15 young inventor finalists from across our district. We had students from Emerson Middle School, Frost Middle School, and Holmes Middle School. And I would like to congratulate Marissa Muller, who received first place for her light-up slippers. It was quite an ingenious idea, and she shared, each of these students shared a little bit about their invention with the group. Jacob Connolly, who received second place, and Xavier Fickle in third place. Again, I cannot tell you how proud we were, all of us from Livonia Public Schools who were there. I'd like to acknowledge how many teachers from the middle school, administrators, Board members, and community members were there to celebrate our young inventors. It was, it was quite a wonderful evening. Mr. Mark Hague, Athletic Director at Churchill, shared some exciting news with us regarding a Churchill standout volleyball player, Raina Yates. She was voted the top female athlete for the fall season in all of the Observer and Eccentric area. So, that is quite remarkable. Many of you may know that each week, students are highlighted for their athletic abilities, et cetera, and voted as top athlete. She was voted top female athlete for the entire fall season. Raina is also going on to play D1 volleyball. She is also planning to continue her education, again, at Northwest, Western State University, and also hoping to go to law school after. So, as you know, our Lady Chargers had quite an exciting season for volleyball this year, and we are very, very proud to share, share that with us, share that with all of you. So, not only do we have pretty awesome kids, but as you know, we have pretty amazing teachers as well. So, I'd like to highlight two teachers who have been nominated for the Life Changer Award and share a little bit with you about them. Lisa Kaiser is a Churchill High School Language Arts and Family Life teacher, and Jeffrey Markwart is a Churchill High School Special Education teacher, who have both been nominated for the 2015-16 National Life Changer of the Year Award. This program recognizes and rewards the very best K-12 public and private school educators and employees across the United States who are making a difference in the lives of students by exemplifying excellence, positive influence, and leadership. Winners will be announced in spring of 2016, but they are certainly already that in our eyes, so congratulations to both of them for being recognized. Finally, Mrs. Jenkins had mentioned Art with the Community. This program started a few years back, and I believe it continues to gain momentum and interest, and we will have all this information on our website, but I wanted to highlight, this is a pretty amazing opportunity for students in grades five through 12. A $10 fee for any two sessions being offered. This Art with the Community is hosted at each of our high schools. Churchill High School, it's being hosted February 10th, Stevenson High School, February 11th, and at Franklin High School, February 23rd, and this is run by our Livonia art teachers, and with the assistance of some of our students, things like photography, painting, printmaking, clay, sculpture, et cetera, are all offered, and it's a great opportunity. I've had the opportunity to attend a number of these throughout the years. The sessions run about two and a half hours, and it is a great evening. I would encourage any of our students or community members to participate. And shortly, you know we'll be talking about some recent action in legislation up in Lansing. We continue to follow many, many developments at the state level with a very careful eye and in many cases, great concern, and we continue to advocate strongly on many, many of these issues, not the least of which is one of the next items coming forward to you. So, I know I communicate with that to you regularly. We'll also have another legislative update on our upcoming study session, but again, But again, there are a number of pieces of legislation impacting schools that continue to move forward in Lansing, and we continue to be involved with those on a very regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. The next item on our agenda is Item 9, hearing from board members. If you're following the agenda along at home, I believe you have the revised agenda in front of you, which Item A will read, "Approval of Resolution in Opposition to Public Act 269." May I have a motion, please?
Yes, President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
I'm sorry, I misplaced my motion. Thank you.
There you go.
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution in opposition to Public Act 269, specifically to the section that prohibits a public body from communicating any information to the residents of their community within 60 days of an election regarding a local ballot question that is to appear on the ballot. Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Oakwist, would you like to address this item before the board?
I would be happy to. I'm pleased the board is taking up this resolution this evening. As you know, our community in Livonia is comprised as a very informed, committed, and involved electorate. And they are very vested in the well-being of our community and seek opportunities to learn about the issues before them. Just recently, just prior to the winter recess of our state legislature, a bill formerly known as Senate Bill 571, now known as Public Act 269 of 2015, was passed late in the night on the final evening before the winter recess. This bill significantly reduces our community's ability to make informed decisions and decisions that directly impact their quality of life, such as their schools, city services, libraries, and other municipal services. As you know, we have very, very little ability to raise funds and generate funds locally. And we are beholden to the state for much of our state funding that is provided to us. However, we do have the opportunity to go to our voters with issues such as our bond election. Many items this evening were shared with you. We are seeing the tremendous benefit of the support of our community for that 2013 bond issue. Additionally, we have work that comes, essential work, that comes through our sinking fund millages, which have been levied each five years very successfully for over 20 years by the voters of Livonia. We also have our non-homestead renewal millage, which comes up as well. And all of these are essential, essential funding elements for the well-being of the students, the staff, and the community in our district. This bill really ties the hands of our local school district and other local municipalities with regard to being able to communicate factual information within 60 days of an election. In fact, this legislation prohibits a public body or person acting for a public body from using public resources to provide factual communications referencing any local ballot questions for 60 days prior to an election. To be clear, as you know, under current law, we are clearly restricted in the use of public funds for this purpose. We are not allowed to communicate propaganda or even a favorite opinion. However, we certainly know that many of our voters are watching closely as it gets closer to a voting time. That 60-day window is essential. And this truly is, it does a tremendous disservice to our voters, and they really deserve our very best and the best information we can give them. Therefore, we're bringing forward this resolution, calling upon our state legislators to repeal Public Act 269. To note, this legislation is only enacted for local ballot questions and not for state ballot questions. So it really only ties the hands of the local districts and local municipalities. Therefore, we are recommending that we send to the governor and to our state representatives a resolution in opposition to Public Act 269 and requesting that they repeal this legislation so we have the ability to communicate fully and accurately with our community.
Thank you very much. Mr. Centers, for the benefit of the public, would you please read the resolution that we are speaking of?
Absolutely.
I thought you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, not at all. Whereas Governor Snyder signed into law with immediate effect, Public Act 269, Senate Bill 571, despite widespread calls for veto of this bill, and whereas both the Michigan Senate and Michigan House of Representatives passed Senate Bill 571 late into the night of December 16, 2015, just prior to recessing for the year, and whereas one of the last-minute amendments made to Senate Bill 571 without knowledge of school districts or local governments and approved without any public testimony was the new language inserted into Section 57, Subsection 3, and whereas this new law prohibits a public body, a person acting for a public body, from using public funds or resources for the purpose of communicating any factual information to the electorate regarding a local ballot question that is to appear on the ballot within 60 days of an election, and whereas this law places an immediate gag order on entities with ballot questions on the March 8 ballot and every election thereafter, and whereas locally elected and appointed officials have a civic and legal duty to residents of their communities to fully inform them regarding the issues placed before them, upon which they may exercise their constitutional right to vote, and whereas existing laws, including the former language in Section 57, and decades of guidance from the Michigan Secretary of State, already prohibit the use of public funds to advocate for or against ballot issues, and whereas existing laws already provided for an allowance for elected and appointed officials to express their views without fear of violating that act, the act, and whereas because the new law bans only communication on local ballot issues, it creates inconsistent treatment of statewide ballot questions versus local initiatives, and whereas there are substantial questions regarding the constitutionality and legality of the new law, including a possible ban on freedom of speech. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the school district of Livonia Public Schools calls for an immediate repeal of the new language in Section 57, Subsection 3 of Public Act 269 of 2016. And now, therefore, be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the governor and the school district state representatives and the Michigan House of Representatives and the Michigan Senate.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from members of the Board of Education? Mrs. Bonnefield?
I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this isn't about being able to spend money on literature. We can't even do things that we do normally, like with the dialogue and stuff like that. So there are avenues that we historically send out with this type of information. So it keeps us from doing anything that we normally do like that. So it's not about a question of whether or not we can spend money to send it out, it's a question of whether or not we can speak out. And we already have avenues for that, which we would be unable to use.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I'd like to point out to the community that this public act prohibits us from using public resources to provide factual information to the voters in our community. That includes this building, and that includes our cabinet and other members of our community. One of the things that our board has taken very seriously is the charge for transparency. And one of the ways we've done that most recently is to host forums and different workshops to present information to the public. We would be prohibited, and this would not enable us to remain transparent, which is kind of a scary thought.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Centers?
Yeah, I think, you know, we are right now in the news, seeing a lot of schools, particularly in Detroit, but you see the reaction from other districts from around the state, looking at their buildings and the terrible shape that they're in. We are very limited with our public funds. We say that over and over again. I can't imagine what our district would be like without a sinking fund, without a bond to provide technology and needed improvements to our buildings. It is really, really a disservice to the voters that we cannot communicate coming up to an election. When people pay attention, everyone has normal lives, they have to live, and it's when people get close to an election that they want to know the information about what's on a ballot and what its impact is going to be. We are not able to communicate that information to people. This is, of the disturbing things coming out of Lansing, this may be the most disturbing. I can't say anymore about it. Very troubling. The way it was passed was very troubling, and I fully support the repeal of this.
Thank you. Questions or comments from other board members?
I support what my colleagues have said. I fully support this resolution, and I really hope that legislation is done to take care of this. It's interesting that even many of the legislators who voted in favor of this, immediately afterward, in the next coming couple of days, said they didn't understand what all was in it, and oh my goodness, they wouldn't have supported it had they known. Number one, read it before you vote on it. Secondly, if you realize you've made a mistake, we are calling on you to fix your mistake.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item...
It will be sent to Lansing.
I'm sorry.
This will be sent to Lansing immediately.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Oakwist, could we also get that put up on our website?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 9B, Approval of Superintendent's Contract. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District approve the attached employment agreement for Superintendent Andre Okwist. Further move that the President and Secretary of the Board of Education be authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the Board of Education.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mr. Winery, can you please address this item for the board?
Yes. Thank you. The employment agreement before you has been reviewed by me, by the district's labor attorney, and by our search consultant, Dr. Wilmot, and by Board President Burton, prior to being brought before the board. And those reviews included consideration of our legal obligations, of our compliance with our own policy, and any other updates to make it appropriate, as well as a review to make sure it's competitive with others out in the state of Michigan. Except for several minor revisions to update the employment agreement, the agreement is essentially the same as that afforded our previous superintendent, except for Item Number 1 of the agreement, which really addresses the term. The proposed term runs through June 30, 2019, and this is consistent with our last superintendent employment agreement, which was also a three-year agreement. However, the former employment agreement required the board to vote on an annual basis to extend the agreement another year in order to continue maintaining a three-year employment agreement. In the proposed agreement, Item Number 1 has been revised to incorporate a provision which extends the agreement by one year each year, absent notification by the board to the superintendent that the employment agreement is not being extended. This automatic extension has several advantages. It provides stability to the district, which is very important at a time when we know from experience that the pool of candidates qualified to lead our district is limited, and when we know that our current superintendent is very marketable and is a very valuable asset to our district. It provides some measure of job security to the superintendent, which is important at a time when we expect the superintendent to make a long-term commitment to our district. And finally, guards against the possibility of inadvertently missing a renewal period, thereby leaving the district with a superintendent with less than a three-year agreement. This type of provision is not unusual for an executive-level position. This automatic one-year extension does not involve any waiver of rights by the district. There are safeguards built into the agreement, of which I'll list several. If the board does not wish to extend the agreement, it merely needs to give formal notice to the superintendent that it is not going to extend the agreement. No specific reason is needed. Provision Number 13 of the agreement allows the board to terminate the agreement at any time for cause, without liability for wages or benefits. And that can occur anytime during the term of the agreement. Also, Provision Number 9 of the agreement provides for annual evaluations of the superintendent, whereby the board is able to gauge the effectiveness of the superintendent and then make appropriate determinations. This agreement was presented to the board at a study session on January 4, and at a committee of the whole meeting on January 11. Except for the provision that I've just detailed, the terms and conditions contained in the agreement are the ones that have been approved by the board for our former superintendent. I recommend approval of the employment agreement as submitted tonight as being fair, competitive, consistent with our policy, consistent with our legal obligations, and truly in the interest of the district. I'm happy to respond to any questions, and thank you.
Thank you very much for that very thorough review of what was very many months incoming. Do we have questions or comments from board members?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. As you all know, we voted a month ago to offer a contract to Andre Okwist, and that was the culmination of a long and arduous process. And I want to thank Mr. Winery for holding our hand through that process. He spent countless hours behind the scenes, making sure that we had the up-to-date and correct information, and just went above and beyond to make sure that we were prepared for the discussions that went forward. And someone once said that the jobs number finished until the paperwork is done. So that's what we're here to do tonight. I also want to thank Dr. Weber and Dr. Wilmot for their help in getting us through this process as well. They also spent many, many hours, not only leading us to the process of an appointment of a superintendent, but also, as Mr. Winery said, reviewing the contracts and going over them to make sure that they are up-to-date, current, are in keeping with other superintendent contracts around the state, and for Gary King for reviewing it from a legal standpoint to make sure that all of the legal requirements are included in our contract. I fully support this contract, and I fully support the rolling contract of adding an additional year. For many of the reasons that Mr. Winery set forth, this creates a lot of stability. I'm not looking to hire a superintendent for a year and a half or two years like some other districts that we've seen. We want our superintendent to know that we, as a board and a school district, are invested in her, and she is invested in us. And I think this is a way to show that confidence, to show that we are here for the long run, and we fully support her. And I'm fully in favor of this contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments from other board members? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. I would just like to extend to all of my board members and to Superintendent Okwist the wonderful things that I continue to hear about the work that she's been providing for our schools, for our children, and for our community. And thank you so much. I hear it on more than one occasion, a lot of times, because everybody asks, "How about the new superintendent?" So thank you, and I appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you, Mrs. McDonald. Questions or comments from other board members? Mrs. Bonnefield?
As M A S B pounds into our head, the school board has one employee and one employee only, and that is the superintendent. So I am very pleased to be able to offer this contract to Mrs. Okwist and hope that we have a long and enjoyable run in the next few years. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Questions or comments from other board members? I'd like to echo what my fellow board members have said. Mrs. Okwist was our top-choice candidate from the very beginning. We are thrilled to have gotten through, as Mr. Johnson said, a very long, very, very thorough process. We looked outside of our district, inside of our district, and Mrs. Okwist had the opportunity to... to really have a four-month practice run at it, and as our interim superintendent. It went very, very well, luckily for her, because it was, went very, very well for us. I am thrilled to offer this contract, and like my colleagues, I do agree with the one modification that we are making and making that a rolling contract. I believe it's very, very important to send a strong message to our superintendent and to our community, that we intend for this to be a long-term relationship. Long-term leadership has been proven by studies to be best for student outcomes in your district, and I want to do everything that we can to put an excellent leader as our superintendent, and then let that individual serve, and let them know that we are fully behind them in their serving. Another reason that I am in support of that was something that Mr. Winery alluded to, that we do not want to have the board accidentally forget to have that renewal done on an annual basis, as did happen a few years back, and have the board unintentionally slip into a two-year contract with a superintendent. The reason that's so important is that if you have a superintendent and you're suddenly in a two-year, not a three-year contract, that sends you an inadvertent message that the board is not necessarily pleased, and they'd better begin looking elsewhere. I do not want Mrs. Okwist to begin looking elsewhere. I would like to definitely be able to have the safeguards, and we have, we have studied them in great detail, for the Board of Education for, for this contract, to make sure that there are appropriate safeguards on, on both ends, and there absolutely are, but I am definitely in favor of having this be a rolling contract with, with the ability of the board, should it need to, to stop it. But if, if we do not need to, that it will go on. As Mr. Johnson said, I would like to express my sincere appreciation to MLI, Michigan Leadership Institute, for their guidance of our board education through this process, to Dana Winery for being our, our administrative right-hand man through this whole process. Dana fielded phone calls, including during the Michigan game on New Year's Day, from a board member, that we both missed some of that game. But, and, and he did so graciously. Board members have questions on this contract at different times and before important meetings, and it's very, very appreciated, the amount of work that you've done on it. Mr. King, it's, it's appreciated the effort that you put into it also. It is important to, to the board that this be completely legally solid, and we appreciate that. We also appreciate very much our staff and our community for allowing this board several months to find the right person to lead this district for the next many, many years. The ability of our staff, of our cabinet, to step in and fill one another's roles while we shifted positions a bit around LPS was very, very appreciated. I, that's about it really for me. I'm absolutely in favor of it, and I'm thrilled to be able to call you our superintendent, Mrs. Okwist.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item nine C, hearing from board members. Rather than hearing every single board member thank folks for the same things, many, many months ago, we began the, the procedure, the policy of, of practice of having one board member give a lot of thanks for the evening for us. By all means, other member, board members are welcome to join in. This evening, Mrs. Jarvis will be speaking for the majority of the board members.
Thank you, President Burton. My, what a busy evening we've had. First and foremost, congratulations to the, our students, our art students from Stevenson High School, to Bianca Bozes, Sarah Dressing, Tatiana Smick, Alexander Stratton, and Sydney Queen. We are honored to share your creativity. I for one will make it a point to come in later in the week and check out Sarah's work, and I hope that you will too. We also honor tonight Jeannie Duquette with a Golden Apple Award. Mrs. Duquette is a volunteer at Randolph Elementary, and I'd like to thank her for her many years of dedicated service. Just thinking about the number of children whose lives she has touched is staggering, and what a wonderful role model and an inspiration. We took a moment also to honor the volunteers who serve on the LPS Board of Ed. Personally, I can't say enough about my colleagues at the table. They serve with passion and integrity, and I learn from them every day. I'm privileged to serve our district with them, and I thank them. Congratulations to Cindy Scott, our new Director of Elementary and District Services. I've known Mrs. Scott for about ten years, ever since she began as the principal at Riley Upper Elementary School. She's a wonderful lady, and I am so thrilled that she is able to step up into this role. She's going to be dynamite, because that's what she does wherever she goes. Thank you to the members of our school community for sharing their frustrations regarding school funding and teacher pay. I'm gonna try really hard to not get on a soapbox. We have approached legislators regarding this issue, and we will continue to do so. We encourage our staff members and our community members to inundate the legislators, calling on them to fulfill their constitutional mandate to adequately fund public education in Michigan. The district is moving along steadily in updating and improving our buildings and providing current technology. These improvements are possible due to the board issue, which was approved by the community in 2013. This is a long-term commitment, and we're glad to keep you apprised of its progress. Congratulations to our new hirer, as well as to our seven retirees. We're continually in awe of the dedication shown for so many years, with more than 140 years represented tonight. I commend this board for speaking out against Public Act 269, calling for its repeal. We take seriously our charge to provide unbiased, factual information to our community, and request that the governor will allow us to continue doing that. We appreciate the support of our community in this effort. The board is thrilled to finalize its hiring of our new superintendent by awarding her with a contract. We hope we can look forward to a long and happy tenure with her, and we appreciate the passion that she brings to this position. I wish good luck to our music students, who will be participating in the MSBNA solo and ensemble competition later this month. We look forward to celebrating your successes. We have a new chili champ. The PTSA Second Annual Chili Cook-Off was won by Josh Thompson, Josh, Josh Thompson of Churchill High School, and he is also a student in the Culinary Arts Program at Franklin. His appropriately-named chili afterburner, I can speak to its effects. And finally, if it looks very busy at Dickinson Center, you're right. Last week, the first organization revealed globally the annual competition, the theme. The theme is stronghold. It has a medieval flavor, and this kicks off the six-week build season. So, we have some very busy students and mentors, and we look forward to the robot they build and to an exciting season. If you're into the Middle Ages, if you're middle-aged, come on down.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Are there other board members who would like to speak this evening? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. One of the benefits of, of taking a little break and meeting with our honorees, you tend to pick up a little tidbit of information, and I found out that Mrs. Duquette and her husband, next Tuesday, will be celebrating their 64th wedding anniversary.
Wow.
So, I want to congratulate them both on their long and obviously happy marriage.
Thank you. Questions or comments from other board members? Mrs. Bonnefield?
I just want to say, I know Mrs. Okwist mentioned Young Inventors is, I'm currently president of the La Lavaunia Rotary, AM Rotary, and we also included Clarenceville in that as part of the La Lavaunia Schools. So, one of the things that we're trying to do is really include them in, in different things that we're doing. So, it was the three elementary, or upper elementaries, and then we also had Clarenceville participate with us, so thank you for that. I want to apologize for being sick. I'm really sorry, and getting up and leaving, but this was a really important night, and it was really hard to miss. I want to say congratulations to the Stevenson drama. They did their one act the other night. I went and just, I, you know, it's just hysterical. They're just great. And I also maybe get a little bit on my soapbox. You know, one of the things that really frustrates me is that, you know, we hear a lot from different people in the state of Michigan that we need to live within our means as a public school district, and unfortunately, we do. And unfortunately, we are forced to do that, and it, it's at the expense of our teachers, it's at the expense of our children, and it is at the expense of those brilliant minds who, as was mentioned earlier tonight, will choose other professions, or those brilliant minds that we have currently will change professions. It was also mentioned that, you know, for us to have our voices heard in Lansing, and we do constantly, but as I suggested the other night at the, when we had our meeting at the Career and Technical Center, is that we are hearing just these heartbreaking stories about individuals who put their lives for our children, and our most precious commodity, we expect to pay people to teach our most precious commodity, our child, next to nothing, not even a living wage for some of our younger teachers. So, please, tell your story to Lansing. Send those stories, send those, the, the letters that you're writing and reading to us. Mail those. They're heartbreaking stories, and it's not right. But the legislators need to hear that, because they hear it from us, and they're like, "You guys can cut," you know, whatever, but they need to hear how it's really impacting those people that we expect to teach our children. And if we can't hire and pay the people to take care of our children, I'm not sure what else we should be spending our money on.
Comments from other board members? Mr. Centers?
First of all, I'd like to compliment Rob Dziewicki and everyone else who put on the Chili Cook-Off. I was honored to be a judge, and I tried all eighteen chilis.
That explains a lot, Mr. Centers.
I think I'm still full from it. One thing that kind of came under the radar tonight is electing officers, and the way we did it with the nominations, we really didn't get to compliment the officers this year on the job they're doing. Tonight, we talked about board members, putting in a lot of time. Well, one in particular, especially our president. The role of president is an enormously time-consuming and challenging position. You are the spokesperson for the board. Aside from the additional time that you put in, you are, are always have to be on your toes and really reflect the views of seven people. That's an enormously difficult job, and I think you're doing a great job. Tammy, Diane, thank you as well. Both doing a great job. Finally, I, you know, I, I'm definitely touched by the stories from our teachers. First of all, I think it's very brave for people to come and talk publicly and, you know, although we may not have thousands of people watching us. You know, to go out and speak publicly in front of a bunch of people you don't know and tell your story, I think is very brave. Secondly, my wife and I were in your exact same position just a handful of years ago. We were both in the teaching profession, and the instability of that profession, the lack of financial stability ultimately led us to different positions. And I don't want that to be the case for other teachers. Part of why I got involved in the Board of Education is because I, I thought I have a better voice in advocating for not just the kids in this district, but for our staff, our community as well. We are an early, we would meet the criteria of an early warning district, and we are better off than many districts around the state. We are in a budget crisis still. Years after year, we've been saying this. And looking at the budget, what's coming up this year in Lansing doesn't seem like it's getting through. With the way things look politically, we have to have broader public advocacy, because what we're doing now, what we've been doing for the last five, eight years isn't working. We need to engage family members, we need to engage our community better, we need people to, to hear these stories of our teachers, hear stories of, of kids that could benefit from interventions that districts can't afford. Hear, see the pictures of schools crumbling in cities like Detroit and others. So, I guess I had my turn on my soapbox too, but, you know, it's, it's, I'm hoping we reach the tipping point where things have to reverse itself and change, because really it's kids that are suffering at this point, and families. That's all I got.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from other members of the board? I will echo the comments of, of my colleagues. I'll try not to repeat too many of them. The one that I, that I do have to say at the, at the risk of repeating is, our teachers that are coming forward saying that it's an underpaid profession are absolutely correct. If you're coming forward to try to convince the Board of Education, you are so preaching to the choir. I'm proud to be your choir, but we're there, and frankly, the reason that most of us are sitting in these seats is because we wanted to make a difference in public education and make it better. For the benefit of, of the public, those who are educators in this room are probably very aware of these facts, but for those who may be listening, 90% plus of our budget goes to salary and benefits, as it should be, because we're a people-teaching-people organization. We don't manufacture parts. We, we teach people. So, that's the appropriate funding of our budget. Our budget's being cut by the millions of dollars every year. What you'll hear in the media is that more and more money is going toward education every year. How can you say those two statements and have them both, have, have the speakers feel like they are both true? The public needs to understand that millions of dollars of money is going into our budget as a line item to be paid out directly out in pension funds. So, it's, understand, if it's, if it's $500 million, for an example, we are sent a check for 500 million and told we have to then write that check for 500 million to go right back out again into paying pensions, and therefore, folks are saying more money is going into education. What you need to understand about that is, that's money that's not going into our classrooms, and it's money that we can't use to pay our teachers, and that drives us as board members crazy, because it's not a fair statement to make. It might be factually correct, and it's not fair, and it's not honest. If you folks, if, if any of our community, our, our family members, our education employees would like to continue to, to approach the board as a public way of stating that public education needs a financial fix, continue to do it. Know that you're preaching to the choir, know that you're looking at seven people who could not agree with you more, but that's at least a microphone, and it gets your word out to the rest of the community who may be listening, who might not be aware, because we really are. And this Board of Education has continually done things like gone to courses to understand better what, what school financing is like currently. We've gone to, most of us were at a, an all-day Saturday forum just a couple of weeks ago for school law and finance, so we can see what's coming on the horizon, and one of the the pictures that was painted was not pretty. They said Detroit's got to be fixed. We know that one way or the other, Detroit Public Schools will be fixed, and we were told, "Plan on the potential of a $50 per student cut in some way, shape, or form over the next couple of years in order to fix Detroit Public Schools." So, whatever reason it's in, that's another separate discussion. Livonia may pay the price, again, along with every other school district in the state, to fix it. Absolutely, continue to tell your stories. Absolutely, continue to advocate to Lansing. And if they won't hear you in a group, number one, shame on them, that's what they're there for. But if they won't hear from you in a group, go individually, call individually, write individually. It's what we do on a monthly basis, sometimes a weekly basis, depending on what is the hot button that week. Continue to tell your stories, because public education is not adequately funded. It has been cut year after year after year. Anyone who tells you otherwise is not telling you the sincere truth. Continue to advocate for proper funding of education, and we are your allies. We are doing exactly the same thing. Are there any other questions or comments from board members? The next item on our agenda is item, let's see here, 9D, recess to close session. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District recess to closed session for consideration of legal opinion from counsel.
Support.
We have a motion for Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there questions or comments from the board on, on moving into closed session? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. McDonald? Yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. For the benefit of the public, we will be in closed session for a period, an unknown period of time. We will be coming out likely to vote on one other brief item, and we will be then closed for the evening. You're welcome to wait around or go home, but I have no idea how long it may or may not be. We are now at recess to closed session. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome back to the continuation of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education meeting, January 19th, 2016. The next item on our agenda is item 8E, I'm sorry, 9E, separation agreement. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the separation agreement between the Livonia Public Schools School District, Livonia Education Association, LEA, and Diane Turo.
Support.
I have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are finally at the end of a very long agenda for the evening. Thank you to those of you who have hung in there with us, and have a nice evening. We are adjourned.